Okay, Mr. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We may have approximately 45 minutes for the presentation. We have a lot to cover.
Is there any objection to the 45 minutes for the presentation? None appearing? You can continue.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, town meeting members. I'm David Hutchinson, Chair of the Library Building Committee and the Board of Trustees at the moment. So, I'm up here, I think you all know why we're here. I'm up here with a lot of emotions, disappointment, frustration, and I imagine a fair number of you are feeling that way, too, because we're, obviously, we're here to talk about some additional funding needs. But I'm also filled with gratitude for you all coming out tonight in the snowstorm, and obviously, the huge turnout is just gratifying, and we appreciate that, because hopefully, you feel the library is an important thing to discuss. You know, I also have a lot of excitement and pride, and that's something we're going to try and convey tonight. The three and a half million is floating around, but I want to make sure you experience the project as the design that we have and the team that we have, and try and convey some confidence in the numbers now, as well as the design and why this is the right thing for the town of Reading. So, you know, I want to try and ride that momentum, and hopefully, by the conclusion of the presentation, you'll be with us on this. So, I have a few goals for tonight. First, I want to go through a timeline a little bit. I'll go through it quickly, but I want to make sure we're all positioned, because we're here a year ago talking about this, and now we're back a year later talking about it again with some additional funding requests. So, I want to make sure you understand the timeline. In the last year, we'll talk historically a tiny bit, but I know everyone knows this. Then, of course, we want to make sure we really go into depth on the design proposal and that you meet the team that's putting this together for us. And then, I want to talk specifically about the project costs and primarily the construction costs, and try to give you as much explanation of where the costs are going up and what the reasons are for them to go up. Obviously, that's essential for you to understand the project and why it's important to continue. And then, the implications of the funding request, and to some extent, the Plan B, you know, what, if we don't want to spend that money, what does that mean? So, there's a couple of different ways to look at it. So, those are the things we want to cover tonight. Just, Bob's already covered this a little bit, so I'll go quickly, but why are we here tonight? Because our current plan and what we've committed to the state, they originally want us to be breaking ground in April, but we've got a waiver into the summer, because our architects have laid out a nice plan, including a timeline that the state fully buys into. So, in order for us to break ground in August, we have to have the general contractors onboard by July, and so therefore, we have to prepare bids by June, and we can't go to bid unless the town has all the funds committed. And we, there's a lot of work to do to get the bids ready, so we need to, if the, our only other option here, if we didn't do tonight, would be to be meeting in June, and that would delay the thing by a quarter, and we'd have to go back to the state, they may or may not give it to us. So, this is why we're here, and then, if you back up, we're here tonight, and Bob ran through the meetings in January. So, in order to meet the schedule, we need to do this tonight, and hopeful that we'll proceed after tonight. And by the way, this will go through a lot of stuff. If there are any questions, if there's time, we're happy to go back to any slide and answer any questions, me or any of the team. So, just to review the project history, and the reason I want to do this is there's two reasons why we're, why the library project is before us last year and is still before us. One is the deteriorating condition of the building. It's an old building. It's the library's turn to get updated and modernized, no question. And the selectmen were on us 2007, and we did assessments in 2008. I've been a trustee for nine years, because I think the concept of a library is fantastic, and this particular library is extraordinary, so I'd love to be part of it. But, the, almost since the day I joined the board, we, it's always a building issue. There's something wrong, you know, the town steps in and fixes it if we need it, but it's clearly going downhill, and there was a lot of distraction from delivering a library program and children's services and all this innovative stuff. We spent a lot of time in the building, so it's been going on for nine years. And so, the town put together an ad hoc municipal building committee, maybe we'll have a permanent one. Top priority of the town at the time was the library. You guys better do something about that. And then, the, in parallel, the trustees engaged the community. What do you want in the library? We asked the community, as well as observed the community, and the use of the space in the library is the other track. It's not just about fixing the envelope and the systems. It's about how people want to use the library. They want more space for tutoring. They want more public computers. They want more meeting space. They want better flow. They want more children's services. The current building, even if it was renovated, or, you know, cleaned up a bit, wouldn't serve that need. So, we have two needs. I just want to emphasize that. Everyone agreed, this is what we need to do. But, Reading being Reading, we kind of were sitting there in 2010. Everyone agreed we needed to do it, but there wasn't enough momentum to do something. Then, the state grant process came along, and I think, I'm going to assume that you're all familiar with the whole process there, but we banged through that. But again, in a town process, it's not easy. We go to each committee, and then we hire people, and we sort of build up to that. We put together a grant application, because Reading has a great library and a perfect story for this grant program. We've got an old building, great program ideas, very strong community. So, the red blocks indicates that we submitted our application as planned. And lo and behold, six months later, we won the grant. But once again, the state had no money to fund that. So, we're on the list. We're 10th or something like that, maybe 15, but they funded down to two, one and a half libraries before, something like that. So, there we were. We had the state grant awarded, but we didn't have it in hand. So, we're waiting, and then, finally, in October 2012, they funded it, maybe through some political pressure, and some folks here might have helped with that, and I appreciate that. But the state finally waterfall more money down into the system. So, we got our money, but you have to get the town to commit to its share within six months, which is a relatively tight timeframe for a town to put it all together, because we had to get our act together, get to the voters, and as Bob just explained, for this process, you know, between a town election, because it was clearly an override, town meeting, boards, and then the proper prep to go into that, when you back it up, it takes quite a bit of time. So, we went through that, and that's why we went to the voters in April. That was our deadline, and the voters kindly approved the override in that period. So, there we are. We've got the, we've got the approved money. So, during the summer, we hired, we formed a building committee when we hired a project manager, and the project manager started to order things, two goals, hire an architect and start looking for temporary space, which they proceeded to diligently. In September, October, we select, we selected an architect in August, and they started to look at the project, but we didn't sign them up. So, they started to look at it in a light way. Dan used the term at risk, but I think that's a fair way to say it. And then, and they started to look at some of the construction costs, and as I told you, in November, they identified some items that they felt weren't in the estimate that should be. So, and what I also said in November was, there may be ways to offset that 800 to a million, if we really tighten our belts on that, on that project. But we also concluded that we simply can't complete it without more information. So, the, again, the architects were with us. I presented here basically what I just said. And then, later in November, the architects were signed to a contract, in which case they immediately continued, but in, with more vigor and financial commitment, to get their consultants to do all the invasive testing and expensive testing to get all the information we need. In December, the, as directed, the architects came back to us with a schematic. It doesn't make sense to, at this point, to develop cost estimates until you have a specific design. And we'll have the architects up, and, you know, they can either verify or disclaim that statement. But they have a nice, they need to have a fairly detailed design, which they developed, which we'll go through in great detail tonight, and the Library Building Committee, which was the town's appointed body overseeing this, looked at it, liked it, and said yes. And what that means is that we then directed the architects to go cost out this project. And to some extent, it, there, it's an independent start. They weren't building off the old estimate. They said, this is the design, although the design is quite similar in many ways, but please tell us what it would cost to do this library today. And in January, we gave them one month. So, it was in the middle of December, we said, you know, work through Christmas and New Years, and get us all those cost estimates. We're going to meet January 16th, and you tell us how much it costs. That's the first that the Library Building Committee and the trustees and the town manager heard about the change. And it was in the three to three and a half million dollar range. And so, that group said, well, we're clearly going to have to go back to the town for this kind of money. And we've been, we pressed them on the cost. This wasn't a pie in the sky kind of project, as you'll see, and I hope to convince you of that. We clearly had to go back. Therefore, we went to a financial forum. That was the earliest we could do it, on the 29th. Talked about it, and then, here we are at the town meeting. I will go into some of the costs and results later, but right now, I'd like to, with your permission, invite the architects up to explain the design and some of the cost elements that make up the construction costs. With your permission.
Is there any objection? None appearing? Fine.
As the architects come up, Paul and Chris, I'd also like to introduce Evan Warner. Evan's from STV Inc. He's our project manager and has done a fantastic job keeping these guys in line, as well as us, as well as the town. So, we thank you for that, Evan, and he's available for questions as well. So, I'm going to introduce Paul Vachika and Chris Koyos from CBT Architects, who will take you through the design and the, and the costs. We need to switch presentations. Thank you. I'll be back.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Paul Vachika. I'm a principal at CBT, Charles Bourbon Sacros in Boston, Massachusetts, and with me is Chris Koyos, who's an associate principal at CBT. We're going to try to summarize all the work that we've done since the fall, but as David has mentioned, we're more than happy to go back to any of the slides, should you have any questions or wish to reinvestigate some of the things that we're talking about. Currently, the library, the existing old school that has been converted to libraries in this location, the conceptual idea about an addition was in that location. That has remained the same. For those of you who need a little bit of orientation, this is Middlesex Avenue, School Street, and is it Deering? Deering. So, the parking lot, or how you enter, is currently at the rear of the school, the front of the historic front of the school and the port cochere at that point. And the entry to the library is still and will remain, although reconfigured, from the main part of the parking to the rear. We'll go through some of the floor plans. Just to orient yourself is that the yellow, and you'll see these colors on all the plans are sort of the circulation of the resources throughout the library and the offerings that the library holds. The blue are special areas, and those are primarily the children's room, which is upstairs, and the teen room. The green are the staff areas, either support desks and staff areas that serve those areas, reference being here, circulation here on this particular plan. And the purple are meeting areas, and that is one of the things programmatically that has expanded. There's now a diversity in sizes and shapes and areas to meet throughout the library. When we first started in the fall, one of our first tasks was to try to understand how the library works, how you, how the library serves its patrons, how they work with each other, how the staff interacts, how they support. We also were to confirm the program. What we learned was that the program was absolutely sufficient in the way that it was constructed in the earlier parts of the, of the project before we came onboard. What our job was at that point was to try to understand, again, to drill down, not so much on the quantitative aspects, but the qualitative aspects. That is, how can we help the library staff serve the patrons? How do the patrons interact with the library resources? And also importantly, how they actually get to and get into the library and pass through the library? So, that was one of our major focuses of planning exercises. Parenthetically, we were also bringing onboard at a time all of our consultants. Previous, there were fewer consultants involved, mostly architects and not so much the mechanical engineers, the MEP, structural. We had brought those people on, and in schematic design, which was the phase that we started in the fall, we utilized their expertise to go through the building, to look at existing conditions, to understand the systems as they exist now, to test the premise that we could either save what was salvageable, or when not salvageable, we would need to go back and replace systems that were probably at the end of their lifespans. So, that was going on concurrently with the planning exercise. From the foundation of that programming, we developed a scheme that actually organizes, utilizing some of the old existing areas within the old school, now converted into the library, was that main space, that main circulation space that goes through the building, the port cochere and the original entry here, the old, or the existing entry as it exists now here. And for those of you who have come to the library in the past, the small addition that was placed at that point, which now became the vestibule of the library, was access either going up a fairly substantial set of stairs, or if you chose not to do that, were infirmed or had baby strollers, you would have to negotiate a ramp that would come up and around, actually pass the entrance and back up again to that from the parking area that currently exists. That also then led to a circulation area, which was in this location, the desk currently being here, and everything, including entry, baby strollers, people walking in, checkout, would all be occurring right in that location, and we felt that that needed to be changed to serve the library patrons in a better way. And so, what has happened is that we've moved the entry from that location to here, and we've lowered that entry, and we'll show you a section that sort of describes that to, basically, on grade or on the existing grade of the, of the parking area. That means that we could remove all of that ramping that was actually placed after, of course, the building was first, first created, and come in on that, and so there would no longer be any negotiation of exterior stairs or ramps. That sort of left us with a entry system that actually moves an elevator, which is sized now appropriately and per the code, a set of stairs that comes up and actually accesses the circulation desk and the support areas of staff that services the patrons at that point, therefore allowing all the areas of the circulation to occur here instead of everything, including the entrance at that point, that is currently in the existing library. That also anchors this, this circulation. That also includes this axis that goes through to the existing, to the new addition. So, utilizing that existing footprint of the circulation, we're actually bringing that all the way through. The circulation desk now has complete purview and supervision over everyone entering the main part of the library. The terminus of that axis is actually within an expanded teen area. That teen area, although, there are no teens, I assume here, the teens are, although look like it's an autonomous and self-sustaining area of the library, it's actually adjacent to support areas, reference and reference areas, so that there is supervision, although it is, it is quietly done at that location. That is another area of service, which is the reference, again, overseeing and looking along that axis. The addition actually has a large seating area, which also, as you'll see in the elevations, are against the exterior of a very large glass window facing to the east. The main collection on this floor, other than reference, is actually some of the most heavily used circulating material, which is right at the top of the entrance in that sort of inner foyer now. Two other items to look, to look at are the stairs. Currently, there's a stair here and a stair here. The code actually requires, in terms of egress stairs, to have them as far apart as possible. And building the addition here and sort of shifting the center of gravity planwise into this location actually caused the stair to not only become further away, but also code compliant. That is, if this stair should, for, to be compromised in a fire, this stair was farther enough away from that influence so that there's a safe egress out of the building. And so, for some of you who know the two stairs now, the one stair remains, the other stair is new at that location. This sort of gives you an idea of the section. Right now, this is the level that I just showed you, which is the main level, and the parking level is still at this, at this level here. You now come up and you negotiate stairs on the exterior of the building or that ramp that comes up to get to that level. And what we've done is that we've actually dropped the initial entry sequence so that you come directly off of the, off of the grade of the existing parking area directly into the building, and then you negotiate a stair internally now, no ramp, or an elevator that was placed in that location to be gained access to this half level and up to this level. Of course, that elevator is, also allow us to go up and down the building on the vertical to the second level and to the basement level. Back to the first floor, that's that elevator location. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. No, we went down to the lower level. I'm sorry. Well, we'll stay here. So, part of that stair is to also go down into the lower level of the, of the library. With the removal of that ramp, we actually can expose what was the original facade of the school building that also included windows along that area. So, now, what was relegated to basement space with no natural light is now sort of recoup that area for the areas of circulating material here. Again, there is a point of service at that point. Tech Services is located down here, as well as other staffs in the corners. The mechanical area that actually bifurcated the space and also became an obstruction for clear views through all of these areas are now moved into the addition where we can control it a little bit better. And again, as we've added the additions, we've moved the center of gravity here so that mechanical area now becomes more central to service the existing building and the addition. We then recaptured that space to clarify, again, the circulation, and I note that this is the entrance into the lower level, but it also into the community spaces that can be closed off when the library is closed and used for the town's purposes after hours in the library. That would be the main entrance, again, from the circulation of the, or at the grade of the parking into that location also. The two major spaces, community spaces down here, is 150-seat meeting room that could be split in half, so that you can have about 70 and 70 here, and then a larger conference area, about 30 seats in that conference area. Again, access to the elevators and also facilities when the library is closed off. Back up to the first floor, again, either by elevator or the main stair, and we're looking at this as the main circulating stair, to the upper level, which is primarily, and the majority of the program here is the children's area. A program space, which is a meeting area. Down in the corner, there is a preschool, which we assume would, the preschool kids would always have their parents involved, so, and located here, so, as, not directly within the point of view of the circulation, the children's desk, but supervised by the parents per se. The young adult areas and the other areas of the children collection, all located within this area, with a central circulating desk, children here, and staff space, which support that, and all the patrons that use that desk. So, if you come up by elevator, you arrive here. If you come up by main stair, you arrive at this point, and then all within view of that desk. Currently, the administrative offices are located here, and they will remain, as well as another, a room that is currently a meeting space that would also remain on that floor. And at a schematic level, these are the two major elevations. Perspective from the parking area, again, those windows that I described in the basement now opened up because we've removed the impediment of the, of the ramp and stairway. The existing entry now located here, a much more glassy facade that you will be able to actually see and reconstruct the corner of the existing library building. So, to honor that building, instead of adding a very opaque area of entry, we're doing something very glassy so that we can see all of the library as it was conceived originally. And then, the addition, which is using the materiality of what the building is used in coloration, but not trying to mimic the building in any way, but sort of separate it from that glass piece from that. But then, of course, planwise integrated so that it becomes a part and parcel of the whole library piece. From the main thoroughfare, the port cochere actually remains. We are now investigating putting an invasion lab or a meeting space at that point underneath the port cochere, because the main entrance, of course, is at this location, to really sort of activate the front of the building. And then, the addition, again, subservient to the main building, but also complemented in color, but again, trying to honor the existing building by keeping it as quiet as we possibly can and utilize that existing space. That level that we talked about, that entry level into the community areas, is that door or that area right there. Chris Koyos is going to go through a little bit of the investigations that I spoke about before.
Parallel with the planning that we were doing for the layout and the functionality of the library, accommodating the program, organizing the circulation, and how it would function for the staff and for the patrons, parallel to that, we spent a lot of time investigating the original building, because a large component of a project like this is really, you know, the physical issues that remain with any existing building. We're going to just show you some examples of some of the things we found during our investigations. Our investigations included architectural review of the materials and the conditions of the building. It included our engineers coming along and looking at the structure, looking at the mechanical systems, civil engineer looking at the conditions of the site, along with our landscape architect. So, we spent a fair amount of time at the building, understanding its bones, what the condition of the building is, what the potential is, and where the, the needs were for repair and improvement. Along with our field investigation, we also looked at original drawings or previous drawings, for example, drawings from the mid-1950s that were developed to repair the building after the fire, that took away the turrets and damaged some of the attic space, and then the drawings from the mid-1980s that converted the school into a library. One of the activities that we did was to really take a hard look at the exterior of the building and the exterior walls that sort of are key to the support of this building. The building, it's a load-bearing masonry building with wood frame mixed with some steel, and this is sort of a representative assembly of the exterior wall. We have this yellow brick, which is actually a very unusual size, and the red brick plinth, and then these decorative bands were, which are actually decorative concrete components that are, that are unitized across the building, and the wood windows. So, this is a representation of the basic assembly of the building. It starts to give you a hint of some of the issues that we see. Windows that are no longer functional anymore, they've outgrown their useful life. They have heavy, heavy layers of paint. Most of the balance weight systems are gone. Most of the windows are no longer operable. They're not insulated glass. The paint is all peeling. The, these bands, and we'll look at this in a little more detail in a moment, these bands, you can see all the staining. One of the reasons they're so stained is that virtually all the mortar is gone from these bands. The water washing down the building has washed a lot of the mortar out, and that's leading to infiltration into the building. Now, the, a lot of the joint work is, is open in places and needs to be repointed. Here, a couple of specific examples of difficulties with the exterior of the building. You can see this cracking that makes its way down to the lintel. There's a number of areas where these types of cracks appear over lintel. There's a, a number of areas where these types of cracks appear over lintels. There are some cracks in corners, and here is an area, for example, there's actually a hole in the wall here where this band is damaged. And again, part of that is through continuing water infiltration, because the mortar is gone in many locations. The water enters the building, it freezes. When water freezes, it expands. The expansion of the water then blows the brick out. This area in one of the turrets is an example where there's a pretty significant area of wall that is damaged and blown out that needs to be reconstructed because water has been getting in. Some of this is a result of deferred maintenance over the years. We have no doubts that even since the grant was done in the last three years, that there's no, there's almost certainly been continuing deterioration as water continues to get into the building. We looked at the roof, and we looked at the eaves, and this is one, one of the eaves, there's a, there's one of the downspouts, and we can see some deterioration here. The, the gutters, if you stand there when, when it's raining, you can see pinholes in the gutters and, and water leaking. Here's an example of some of the mortar that's washed out and that needs to be repointed. This is the attic space, which was repaired after the fire in the 1950s, and the dormers were removed. This HVAC system is a, a later addition, I believe in the, in the 1990s if I'm not mistaken. And you can see here, when, when some of the work was done, that, putting in the insulation, putting in the electric, some of it was simply left in disrepair. They cut holes in the floor, and the technicians simply left the debris there. We've gone as far as digging a test pit along the east side of the building in order to understand the foundations, to understand how the foundations are put together, to determine where the bottom of the foundation is, so that we don't undermine that in any significant way, or that we at least work with an understanding of that so that we can minimize and mitigate any costs that might be related to disturbing existing foundations. So, so these are just examples of, of some of the issues that, that we've encountered. They're not unusual with respect to a building of this age. You're not facing a problem that is any different than most of these old buildings. But they're old buildings, they've worn, they need care, they need maintenance, and this project is an opportunity that we see for you to engage all of these repairs in a very efficient way with a single mobilization as, as part of this project.
So, just picking up a little bit of what Chris was talking about at the end, the, our work and our practice includes repurposing or renovating historic libraries throughout the Commonwealth. Some of our work has been with H.H. Richardson Buildings at Quincy, we've done the study of Woburn. We, there was a repurposed school that we were involved in at Harvard, the Harvard Public Library. So, what we're seeing here is simply an incredible asset, a civic asset in the town of Reading that had been repurposed. And repurposing is like the new catchphrase. We repurpose everything now. The fact of the matter is, when you repurposed the school years ago into the library, that was sort of at the forefront of what people are sort of talking about in terms of sustainable design. When we reprogrammed, or when we programmed and inserted the program within the building as you see it, we didn't see any major compromises. In fact, the existing building sort of allowed a lot of that repurposing and the continued refinement of that to exist. So this building lays an incredible foundation for exactly what civic building should be able to do, and that is withstand the kinds of, of improvements and refinements that we were talking about here. It really is, it really is an incredible building that's worth the effort, of course, to maintain as a public library building and move forward, at least in terms of our experience working through many of the libraries in, in our portfolio. This idea about value enhancement, about what is it that we're doing within the library, we sort of talked a lot about accessibility, both the handicap accessibility, but only just simply accessing by any patron and how they are serviced by the staff members, and how we could, as architects, make that easier by, by locating program elements that could be readily accessed and, and identifiable in an easy way. We talked a little bit about the functional improvements, that is, the programming disposition throughout the entire library and how that, and that works. Of course, all of the surfaces in the library would be at refinishes, or new finishes, they are certainly at the end of their, of their life expectancy, and that is included as a part of the, of the library project. Chris talked a lot about the exterior envelope repair. The insulation values that we're proposing also have an integrated approach design, which means that as we make the building a little bit more tighter in terms of insulation and window replacement, we can also size mechanical systems appropriately and downsize it so we're not using as much tonnage, and therefore, we're also not using as much electricity. And that, therefore, the operating cost of the library will actually be, be minimized as we update the mechanical areas, materials and equipment, but to do it in a basis that we're not starting from a leaky building, but we're actually enhancing that piece. The public safety issues, we're really trying to make the library sort of sufficient without adding any additional staffing. That was one of the premises that we were given when we started the programming and the, and the reconfigurations of the, of that program within the building. The code upgrades seismically. There are new Massachusetts codes which acknowledge that old buildings, when they were originally built, were not built particularly to withstand earthquake loads. Now that we've gone through the, the library with structural engineers, we are improving, we're actually triggering seismic upgrades that have a sort of cascading effect. And just briefly, I think Chris can talk a little bit about how that works, as well as the.
Sure. Public safety is naturally a very important part of any public building, and as Paul mentioned, one of the issues is the seismic code. And this is an opportunity through a major renovation. It gets triggered naturally by the code, by the amount of money that's being spent, but it's an opportunity to really improve the lateral stability of the building, and we've looked at this with our structural engineers. And to give you an example of what's involved, it's a wood frame building, and the wood framing rests on masonry walls as best we understand it. And it's very important in a, in a seismic event for those two not to separate from each other, for the wood not to pull away from the masonry. So one of the code requirements is to clip all of that, all of that structure back to the masonry walls. And that sort of ricochets a little bit. In order to access those materials, we have to take down all of the ceilings to do all of that clipping. But the, the value that you get back is a much safer building, a building where that, that, that risk is mitigated to a degree, along with that, some, some lateral stability that will come through some additional sheer walls. Paul mentioned the fire stairs. The building presently has two open stairways, neither one is enclosed in any type of rating. This is an opportunity where we would get the separation for the fire stairs, but we would also enclose them in fire-rated enclosures that would allow a safe egress from the building. The planned layout is an opportunity to improve the supervision of the building, to relocate the elevator in a, in a location where it's very visible to everybody, but also to resize it to a, a current standard that allows, for example, a stretcher to be taken into the elevator and for, for better safety access up and down, along with modern alarm systems, upgrades to the, to the sprinkler systems. In terms of overall system replacement, the systems are also at, at the end of their useful life, and we have studied with our mechanical engineers, a system that would be tailored to this building, that would work well within the limitations of the structure, for a new HVAC system, new air conditioning, new heating, very efficient systems within the context as best can be done with a building of this type, along with insulated glass windows, re-insulating the attic, as Paul mentioned. And, and parallel to that, the issue of technology integration. As you know, the world is operating on technology now, and this is, again, a wonderful opportunity to improve the technology of the building. A new infrastructure system for data wiring, a large expansion in, in data ports, and the opportunity to have many, many more computers, which are, you know, in our experience, very, very meaningful to the community and a great asset for the education of, of all members of the community, of, of every age. So this is an opportunity, and we are looking at how we would integrate, you know, new data rooms, new networks, new systems, in order to enhance that capability for, for the project. Our experience is that libraries that have done this in other communities, it's greatly appreciated by those in the community, and we, we see all of the computer stations heavily used in these towns that have gone through this process, and in the same manner that you're looking to do this.
Mr. Hodgson?
Thank you. I promise to be back. Okay, hopefully you can start feeling some of the excitement. I mean, it's a nice thing. They're doing a lot of things here. So, now we, but one of the reasons we're here tonight is to understand why, why we're proposing that we need a little extra money. You know, obviously, what these guys just described is not cheap, but it's, in our view, the right thing to do. But we couldn't necessarily know all of that. So what I, what I'm going to do, quickly, but we can go back to anything you want, is to try and explain where, how the numbers changed, where they changed, and what are the drivers for the change. I'll say upfront, I'm the layperson, and these guys are available to explain it to you in any detail you are interested in. But the summary is that it, it's crept up in a variety of ways in a lot of places. It's not like that one big thing we added that costs an extra $3 million. So just to take you back a little bit, so we, we've got the, the new proposal and the old proposal, the approved proposal. So the total project costs, don't forget, are offset by the 5.1 million state grant in both cases. But the, the, the new project has a direct construction cost of about 10.2 million now, and with the, the standard additional elements of construction, the profit and the contingency of 2.9, that takes you to a $13.2 million construction cost compared to what we had originally estimated at 10.2. The rest of the project is, as, the contingent, the project contingency went up automatically because it's a percentage calculation, prudently. Nor is it time to dip into these contingencies, according to our project managers. And then the, the balance of the project cost was pretty much a net thing. That's, temp space went up a little, furniture and capex we were able to manage a little bit. But if, and if you accept that the construction contract or general conditions, that is calculated as a percentage, that 309,000 delta on the right, the, the real driver is the $2.7 million in direct construction cost. That's what changed, and when you add in the, the increment, the overhead, as well as the, the project contingency that gets added on top of that, we really need to understand what's in that 2.7 million. So, you know, we've worked, I mean, we just saw this number a month ago. We've worked hard with the architects to try and understand it, and we've, I'm going to go through these, you may not be able to see that much detail, but if you can't, we can go back and explain. We've tried to look at it in two different ways. It's the same number, 2.7. One way is by functional component. So, you know, what, what were the drivers that changed it? You know, whether it's the new design, or if it's things we didn't know, or if it's things that weren't in the original baseline. And then the other cut is by material type, just to try and give you a different way to look at it. So, this, there are three drivers that you can, three categories of drivers. One is the recent discoveries and findings, and I think Chris has pretty much touched on most of these already. Obviously, we knew the masonry and walls were in tough shape, but we didn't dig in and take out the bricks and dig ditches to, to look at that, which is generally not in the scope of the conceptual. And so we found the exterior walls are a little, significantly worse than we thought in many places. And the, the, as he was saying, that the ceilings weren't replaced each time, they're just added up. Now that we have to go in and do the seismic codes, you have to take all those out, and that's demolition, as well as putting them back. And the structure, you know, the seismic codes, well, they, the codes are on the books. You don't quite know how that's going to cost until you rip the stuff up and look and say, uh-oh, we're going to have to take it out, fix it, put it back. And then the systems, as Chris alluded to, the, the building's on a wood frame, so you can't put the big ducts to have a modern HVAC system, for example. A better way to do it, apparently, is through high-pressure tubes. You drill holes in the wood and run it through. So if you're costing out a traditional model, and then you find that the building's has wood frames, you have to adapt, which these guys have done. But that has driven the cost. And again, not $1 million more for HVAC, but it costs more, and some of those associated costs are involved. And it, let me say, it's very difficult to assign a number to these kinds of categories. Some things we can't assign numbers to, but the, you know, these things are the main drivers, we want to give you a qualitative direction. The second area that changes the cost from what we had to where we are tonight are these key design improvements. And, you know, and I would, again, I would remind you that the design, you saw the footprint, it's the same thing. It's a renovation of the existing building and an addition, which will have the meeting space and the, you know, stronger floors to hold the books. That's still the rough design, but they have proposed some things that make this project really sing in terms of integration and harmony. And that, in particular, the entry sequence. So now you have a, there's no ramps, there's no elevators coming into the building, you just walk in from the parking lot. And you've exposed all the, all the, the lighting in the basement. And then you come in and you can go to the meeting room, up or down. And it, it's really a nice central welcoming area, and as Paul emphasized, now you have visibility and flow has changed dramatically. And of course, the safety issues, I mean, they're putting in a variety of things. Some things we knew, some things you don't know the scope of, and this is, some of the design choices were to have more visibility, a little more glass so the staff could monitor things, which is nice in a public building that has hundreds of thousands of visitors a year. And then, of course, security and supervision, I allude to, and then efficiency. The current mechanical room is right in the middle, right there with Mike Mulligan, the steam shovel engine down there. And the idea is, let's put that in a corner where it can be accessed, and I think it's in the corner, it can be accessed and, and a lot more efficient in that spot. But of course, moving that and putting, it means that you have to demolish and fix what you took out. But it does seem like the right long-term thing to do, and it feeds into the efficiency that Paul was referencing, where you hope that the operating costs for the building will decrease because of that kind of efficiency. And then the third category are things that weren't in the baseline as much as they should be, you know, for a variety of reasons. But, you know, again, it's difficult to estimate this at the early stage to the, to the degree that I hope you, you understand these guys now have on the table. So you've got the hazmat, and these we can quantify because they looked at what was allowed for hazardous materials in the prior program, and obviously, we were short by 173,000. The roof was budgeted for repair rather than replace. We're four years on from the application, but clearly, it would be a shame to invest 10 million underneath and not fix the roof. But that wasn't originally planned. The turrets, a relatively small amount, but I think, you know, everyone's expectation of design should be, the turret should be in there. They weren't scoped in originally. And then the full replacement of the windows ties in with the, ties in with the whole efficiency and sustainability element. If you, I mean, why have a new HVAC system and have the windows be porous and rotting? And then demolition, as we talked about, some demolition was planned, but all these things that they found, it's, it was underestimated. And the lateral bracing, and then the eaves need more repair. So, so a fair amount of this was simply insufficient. But this is only part of it, obviously. The other, the other element, this is what, this is basically the detail of what I, we had first got a whiff of in, in November, when I shared that with you. So this still remains. So let me cut it a different way. So that adds up, that, the idea is that 2.7 million direct costs are driven by those choices and changes. Another way to look at it is by the type of material. And, you know, some of these bullet points are going to be familiar by now. Chris has discussed them, I've discussed them already. But, you know, when, when the, the contractors look at what But, you know, when the contractors look at what they're going to need to spend, and these numbers are changes, so the full existing conditions might be 600,000 or 700,000, but it changed from our original estimate. So, again, this is a different cut, and it includes all the three drivers and reasons I said before, but the demolition and existing conditions treatment is going to go up because we've got to do a lot more demolition to get at the seismic codes. We've got to do more demolition out front to clean things up to get ready for that entryway. And, you know, we just went down the categories. The concrete, you're going to take more to fix the walls than we knew. You're going to have, they dug it up, the thing, the water damage is much more significant than we thought. You need to put the cement in to make sure that's shored up. And of course, the mechanical room that I said would move, you have to infill that. And then the masonry, Chris has talked about. There's an increment to that because there's more fixing to do. And, you know, metals, you need more structural support in the addition than was planned. And the stairs need to be better supported than, than, you know, to meet the code that these guys would like to meet. And then materials, this is an interesting thing, which I hadn't thought. You, to remove the windows is fairly destructive, and there's some wood trim around the windows that you have to destroy, so that costs more in demolition, but then you have to, after the windows in, you have to restore that trim. And there are things like that, plus the roof for the turrets, the wood for the turret, sorry. And then the wood for the frame, you have to restore some of the stability of the building with wood, is the architect's recommendation. So, you know, wood goes up. By the way, the, this column should add up to about 2.7 million, and we will post this as soon as we can for the community to review. But, and thermal and moisture, you know, this is the roof and the insulation. If you're going to invest in the building, you've got to get that right. Openings. So, I won't go through all of these, but we can go back to them if you'd like. But the idea is simply that these are the categories where the costs have gone up some. And as you can see, it's very much like a credit card bill. No particular item is too eye-opening, but sometimes the total is eye-opening, and that's where we are here. Keeps going, though, and these are the systems, basically, the HVAC, electrical plumbing, fire suppression, little here, little there, and for many of the reasons we talked about. So, that's two ways to think about what's driving the 2.7 underneath. And again, I'm trying to get through this. Delighted to answer questions, but I don't want to take up the whole time because I know there's a lot to talk about, but we can go back to that if you'd like. Now, the Board of Selectmen was, were very interested in making sure we thought through what would happen if we were unable to convince you or the town to fund, fund the project incrementally like we're asking. And, you know, it's a difficult question because it's not black and white, and it's not simply a menu down. So, I want to give you some thoughts on it, and then we can talk about it. But there are some basic assumptions that I want you to be aware. As hopefully was evident from Paul's presentation, this is an integrated design, so it's not modular, so we can't just pull off blocks and reduce the cost initially. I mean, if we have to, we can go back and do that, but the current design, the current flow, and the costing and the design are integrated. And, you know, I think it's fair to say that the building committee has been pressing the architects on the budget throughout, and we push back on some design choices. We push back on some, on some other choices that would have cost more, and we started with the original budget and tried to hold them to it. So, just want to make sure that's understood, that this hasn't been a free ride for these guys. And so, you know, the resulting design and plan doesn't vary much from the original concept, other than the way it works better, and then it accommodates the existing building and greatly enhances the flow and safety. What I tried to show you in the two prior cost cuts is that the costs, the costs and the cost increases are dispersed throughout a lot of different categories, and the cost of code updates, once you crack this egg, are significant. So, if you're going to do a project, they cost a lot, and they affect a lot of things, and they cost more than we had baked in originally. Oops, I missed some really cool stuff there. And I would add that, you know, when we, when the architects came to the LBC and asked, and presented the numbers, the, you know, the building committee trustees, town managers said, "Well, if, clearly, we're going to have to ask the town for more money, we should make sure that it's fully funded. Let's not take cuts out now." It's still, it's, this design, it's tight, but we haven't done, thrown anything overboard at this point in terms of furniture or something like that. So, if you were to say, "Well, we don't have the money, or we have a lot less money," what are our guiding principles? And, you know, we came up with four, but the first one is preserve the state grant. I mean, sure, we could probably scale this project back, and I don't think it'd meet a lot of needs, but we want to keep the state grant. It's $5 million of free money that's hard to get. But we also want to accommodate the community's needs. It's not, as I said earlier, it's not just about fixing the systems and the brick. If we don't, if we just do that, and then the town doesn't get the flow and the computer rooms it wants, you know, query whether we should do the project at all. And then, of course, we have to incorporate upgrades to operate in 21st century. I mean, this is maybe in a descending order, and then we want to maintain the schedule in terms of the project analysis. So, what can't be changed? If you said, "Sorry, Dave, 15 million. That's what we voted. That's what you get." Well, certain things can't be changed. We can eliminate the addition because eliminating the addition violates almost all four principles. You'll lose the grant because the grant is clearly, has an expectation of additional space in the program that was submitted in the application, and so it would terminate the current project. And then the design fails. Everything that Paul said we did would be almost impossible to do in the, without the addition, you know, in terms of load and children's room expansion, meeting rooms and all that. And then, of course, the addition gives us some cost, code update opportunities like the stairs and some other things, and some egress. And then the other thing you can't change is code and safety upgrades. If you're going to do any project, you have to make sure that all the seismic stuff is good, and all the fire stuff, and the access. So, those are things you can't change if you went to this project. So, if you said, "Sorry, you have to work within the original budget," you know, we've identified three categories. So, we can defer, right? We can de-feature or down-design, and we can defund. It's difficult to quantify each of these, but it would be a challenge, obviously, you know, so we could defer a lot of the capital. I'm not saying these are recommended or good choices, but, you know, given everything we've showed you, the design and the reasons for the cost increases, if we go back to the project, this is what we'd do. We'd have to consider deferring capital, and then obviously the town would have to pony it up eventually. Or we could take down the design, and I'm going to invite Chris and Nancy up in a moment just to provide a quick comment on the opportunities there. But obviously, we could dig into the project and really start taking out some of these things. Question is whether we could take out enough. And then the third category, if you will, is to really start looking at what we tried to do in November before it became apparent that that would be insufficient, so why come in with a deficient project, which is to, you know, hopefully, we can get some furniture, you know, from garage sales and things like that, or reuse what we have. And then RFID tracking, maybe we're still back in the 20th century if without that. So, these are some things we could do. And the question is, you know, how challenging would that be? You know, if you, if you really were trying to stay within it, you really wouldn't change the library much. You'd pretty much bring it up to code, if you could even do that, but you wouldn't really achieve what we said to the town we wanted to do with the original vote. And the state grant, you know, how far can you cut this back before you lose the state grant? Somewhat subjective, I think. But, you know, there is a 5% space issue, but I excerpted a few items from the contract that we signed with the state, which says, you know, we'll do an energy-efficient building, we'll do a sustainable building. We won't mess with budget or the, or the plan in any significant way without, without doing that. Indulge me for a couple more minutes. I'd like to invite Nancy Toomey up, with your permission. She's on the Library Building Committee, to comment on sort of this Plan B and related concerns. And then shortly after, I'll invite Chris Coys up from the architects, just to give a short remark on the same concept, to help us out here. Ms. Toomey?
We actually are well over the 45 minutes that you asked. How much time more do you think you will need? Five minutes? Is five minutes okay? Any objection? Okay.
Hi, I'm Nancy Toomey. I am also a town meeting member of Precinct 3. I'm an architect, and I'm on the Library Building Committee. I'm fortunate enough to be able to sit on it. I just wanted to say a few words about the Library Building Committee and assure you that what's being proposed here is not something that the town, you know, will regret in the future. This is taking a building that is over 100 years old, that started out as a school, was given a little bit of a renovation in the 80s to make it into a library, and now we have the opportunity to take this historic building and actually treat it the way it needs to be treated. The plans that are laid out are efficient. They are really going to bring this library, I hope, into the next 50 years, knowing that the town probably won't spend any more money on it for 50 years, and it will serve the community very well. We have a functioning, fabulous program and a library that's falling apart. So, the money that we're spending on this library, and I'm sure no one doubts this, is going to be well worth every penny. The unfortunate part is that we have a 100-year-old building. As an architect, I work with a lot of homeowners, and it happens all the time. The older homes, you open something up, you find something you just can't do anything with, without having to bring it up to code, or without having to correct it. This library is very similar to that. It's just on a big scale. We're talking millions, not hundreds of thousands of dollars like you would in a home. So, it's unfortunate that we have to be here. I really don't want to be here, but as you know from this conversation and from what the presentation showed you, it's not one thing that's causing this to rise in cost. It's little things. It's the seismic upgrades. It's not knowing that we've had all this water damage and it's only getting worse. This building is falling apart because of that. We need to deal with it. So, if this is not funded, we're, it's not going away. The library has to be funded in some way. So, I hope that as town meeting members, you'll understand that the Library Building Committee doesn't want to be here, but understand that we have to be here to make this library what it needs to be. I'm just one of a big portion of the, of the building committee. There's several that are also experts. We have Bob Newton, who was, or recently retired. He was the Boston Program Project Manager for a lot of their library construction projects. I can assure you, he knows what's going on. He's dealt with a lot of architects. He knows what he needs to look at. We also have Greg Stepler on this committee, who is a project manager and deals mostly with HVAC. He's a mechanical engineer as well. So, there are experts in here. I can tell you that CBT is a phenomenal architect, architectural firm. They have done everything we've asked them to do and more, and it's just unfortunate that the kinds of things that we're finding now are going to cost us a lot of money. I will say, though, that the good news is, we're finding them now, not when they've started construction, as happens a lot in some buildings. So, I credit the architects for getting their specialists in here early to find this out. Otherwise, we would be in a tough position if this construction started and we were 3.5 million behind. So, I hope that town meeting understands the Library Building Committee is really trying to make sure that this works as efficient and as, as cost-effective as we can. Thank you.
Did you have one more speaker? Okay.
David has outlined the challenges of trying to do a reduced project, and just to give you just a little flavor of what that means, to take $3 million out of a $13 million project is a significant amount of money. So, for example, if we didn't do the roof and you didn't do the windows, that would save you perhaps $400,000. It's still a long way from $3 million. So, the next step would be to really revisit the design and find ways where we could reorganize the library in a way that had less intervention, and at the same time compromise, for example, how the library functioned. And I'll give you just one simple scenario for, of how something like that might influence the design. One consideration might be to simply leave the entry where it is. Leave the ramp, leave the steps, leave the entry where it is. And that single decision then impacts everything that we consider on the inside of the building. Now, we have to reconsider where does the desk go, and we can no longer have the freedom to move the desk into that ideal position that works very well with the addition and with the old. We have to reconsider now where the elevator would go. Would the elevator stay where it is? Where it is right now is in a very poor condition. It's a very, a poor location, poorly supervised, very, very small. We would have to reconsider that decision and how it would work in an integrated fashion, and so on, and so on, and so on. So, every decision that you make sort of works back through the entire design, and we would simply have to look for ways to achieve the budget, and naturally, we would work as hard to do that for you as we have in trying to achieve what we think is an excellent solution for you. But we would look at how we would accomplish that in a manner that would save money, but there would be compromise along the way, some of it significantly.
Mr. Hodgson?
Okay, to wrap it up, so obviously, I appreciate your patience, but we just want to make sure we got all that information out. Also, this is somewhat a response to accumulated set of questions. We've tried to answer a variety of questions that have been posed about the project, so we want to get it all out there and let you, and let you digest that. So, obviously, the future, if we proceed and the great, the town agrees to the money, then we'll stay on the project that you see here, the project timing. If we don't, then we either do the Plan B process that Chris just described, or talk about it later in the summer, but it'll delay a quarter and all that. So, that, with that concludes our presentation, and I think we move to discussion.
First, we need a FinCom report. Ms. Herrick.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Our report will only take about 45 minutes. On January 29, FinCom voted 5-0-0 in support of the subject matter of Article 6. FinCom does have a voting member on the Library Building Committee, myself. We've been an active participant, and a number of the other members, including Mr. Greenfield and Mr. Berman, have also been actively involved in the Library Committee meetings. We had attempted to meet last Wednesday night to further discuss the financial aspects, how we would prefer and recommend to fund this additional funding. Unable to do that because of the storm, however, tonight, we're able to meet just prior to town meeting, and by a vote of 8-0-0, we recommend in favor of a proposition 2.5 debt exclusion for the additional $3.5 million expected to be required for the project, as David has presented, and that you and the voters had previously approved in a prior town meeting.
Further discussion? Yes, oh, excuse me, before that, Mr. Bonatholi?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I should also note, the Board of Selectmen took a vote tonight in favor 5-0 of supporting the 3.5 debt exclusion.
Fine. Are you just calling on somebody? Yes. Mr. Coco?
Richard Coco, Precinct 4. To the FinCom, did you consider when you decided the fact that the town is going to be facing upwards of a $20 million expenditure for the school department for the kindergarten?
Mr. Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We considered everything. You know, the voters voted for this project, so we looked at a variety of what would happen if we didn't, you know, add the money. We also looked, and you heard the presentations earlier today, about what's driving both the operating and the capital budgets, including potentially a new all-day kindergarten, you know, school project. And what we determined was that, you know, this project needs to move forward, and the best way to do it would be with, for the debt exclusion. If we had these numbers, which you heard presented earlier in April, we would have had the $3.5 million instead of voting, I think, the $9 million town portion, we would have, we would have included that in the debt exclusion. So, that was the way that we thought this project should go, given the fact that... So that was the way that we thought this project should go, given the fact that there is the pressure on all the operating capital budgets, and taking it out within the levy wouldn't be a good idea. We would have added it in if we had these numbers earlier on. When you have a project of this magnitude, the best way to fund it is with a debt exclusion, preferably in a way where you finish paying the debt long before the value of your asset deteriorates. So if we had these numbers, we would have had just a bigger debt override exclusion vote back in April. Unfortunately, we didn't have these numbers. We have them now. We feel comfortable that, you know, they're the best numbers that we can have at the moment and that the proper way to fund it is with the debt exclusion.
Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Struble?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeff Struble, Precinct Seven. I'm already confused. I guess this is a point of order. Right after the motion was made, Mr. Berman made the amendment to fund this by debt exclusion and termed it as a friendly amendment. Was that friendly amendment accepted by the board that made the motion, which would be the library trustee?
As it stands right now, the chair had intended to take a vote on that before we take the final vote.
Yes, we just discussed, you know, our motion is for funding the three-and-a-half million, and we didn't feel as the library of trustees, it was our position to tell the town how the money should be raised, that we left that to FinCom, and that's why they made the motion to say that they thought the right way to fund it was through a debt exclusion.
Okay, so I mean, my usual understanding of a friendly amendment is if it's really, if it's accepted by the motioner, there's really no debate needed. Is that correct?
Yes, we're in line with that amendment.
All right, then I'm no longer confused. Thank you.
That brings up a good point. The chair had planned on taking a separate vote. We will, if there's no objection, we'll take that as part of the original motion. Is there any objection to that? Not appearing, then that we will consider that as part of the original motion. Further discussion? Yes. Mr. Lippett?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Lippett, Precinct Seven. I do have some concerns about going to another debt exclusion override. I think our goal here at town meeting should be to have as few debt exclusion overrides as we possibly can. And we know we have other ones, as was just mentioned, coming up in the future. There are ways the town could fund this three-and-a-half million dollars within our current tax levy without going to the debt exclusion. I think that would make sense to do so we could avoid going this, and there are ways that we could use some of the funding we have in our capital plan or other sources so that we didn't have to do another debt exclusion and another vote to the town. You know, I also feel a little sorry for the library folks. They've worked really hard over the last couple of years, above and beyond running a great library for us in a lousy building. They don't have the capacity that the schools in the town have with expertise around facilities and buildings and all that stuff, and yet they've stepped up to the plate. They took a small amount of money and were able to get us a five million dollar state grant, which as Dan Ensminger said at the last selectman's meeting, was an incredible return on investment. We then asked them to go do an override last year. Now, we used to fund these things, and I understand the change in policy. We used to fund these things within the tax levy. We've done our town hall, our school buildings, our police, our fire, our senior center without going to debt exclusion, but now the policy seems to be that we should, well, it doesn't seem to be, it is, and I understand why that is, that we should go to debt exclusion. So we asked them to go to debt exclusion last spring, and they did it. And we all know here that doing those override campaigns is a lot of work, it's a lot of stress, it's no fun, and it's hard. Now we're asking them to do it again. And we're asking town to vote for it again on a short timeframe with a sort of confusing set of circumstances that I think is going to be a little bit of a tough sell. I'm nervous that the town may vote this down. And if we do, the potential here is that we lose this project, we lose the five million dollar state grant, we lose all the time and energy and effort that's gone into getting the project to this point. So I'm real nervous about that. I understand that it's the sense of everybody here, I guess, to go to a debt exclusion, but I think what that says to us, bottom line, is everybody in this room has to be committed over the next six weeks to work to make sure the town understands what this is about, is going to support it and vote for it. We can't just leave it to the few volunteers and staff at the library. We've all got to step up and do that if that's what we believe in.
Further discussion? Yes. Mr. Hurley?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Andrew Hurley from Precinct One. I was just having some flashbacks, sitting there. A couple of years ago, I remember being a part of this body, and we voted on a very proactive and, I think, forward-reaching plan with the school department to fund a series of improvements through an energy services contract, an ESCO. And I'm wondering if this has been considered in this case, and can we not strip out some elements of the project and either bundle it with that ESCO or create a new ESCO?
Do we have an answer? Mr. Lashar?
Hopefully, a dump truck doesn't show up and run me over. When we did the ESCO, we did omit the library in certain ways. We didn't do, for instance, all the roof replacement and the window ceiling, and we didn't do extensive HVAC work because we knew that the building itself was needing some significant work. Town meeting took an unusual step, and I applaud you for it, when we raised debt, and I think we sold twelve-year debt to do all that performance contracting work. We're able to do much more work that way at a much cheaper price because we used our own borrowing rate than if we had used an ESCO or a finance company's rate and didn't ask your permission at all. There's really, the best vehicle for funding any project is the town's borrowing rate. So there's really no other mechanism to pull out some of this project and say, you know, do it at least through an ESCO. Doesn't really make any difference. Even if we were doing a portion of this, and let's call it performance contracting just for the library, I would still argue the best way to pay for it is by the town's own debt. So it's really a moot point, what it's called. The bottom line is it should be done through debt by the town.
Further discussion? Is it in the back? Oh, yes. Ms. Drucker?
Nancy Drucker, Precinct One. I just have a couple of questions to clarify. I haven't heard from any of the meetings I've attended. What would happen with the nine-point-eight million that the town has already committed? What would that buy? I understand the grant would be lost, but what would be the plan in terms of the library? And I'd also like them to address if they've had some time to consider, you know, how they would address their own fundraising, which I know has been difficult. They've said without a building, but, you know, what are the other options that we have to look at other than this or it goes away? You know, the town did vote for nine-point-eight million dollars. That's a lot of money. What would that buy us? I'd like to actually just hear from someone about what does that get the library? I understand that would not include the grant, but what would that do?
Bob first, or Mr. Lashar?
David will answer some of those questions. I just want to make a couple of comments. Technically speaking, what town meeting did and what the voters did last spring is approve fourteen-point-nine million dollars in debt exclusion. Legally, right now, we could go out and borrow fourteen-point-nine million dollars and we could tell the taxpayers, you pay that. That's what they voted for. However, I think we all understand the expectation was, we're really only going to ask you to pay for nine-point-eight million of that because we have a five-point-one million dollar state grant. But the reason we had to ask for the full amount, first of all, it's common practice, but secondly, as a practical matter, the state grant comes in over five years and construction will happen presumably much faster. So at some point, we're going to take a little bit more than our share and have to pay that, and then they'll reimburse us, much as like happened for a lot of the school projects. So that's the sort of technical side. I think the political or practical side is the voters voted for a project. We promised them a project. Could we legally do something else? We could legally do fourteen-point-nine million dollars. That's not really what they had in mind, I think, when they voted to do the debt exclusion a year ago, and David can answer the rest.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Actually, I'm going to have Nancy answer it, but I'm going to provide her with a graphic. This was the intent of, this was the intent of this slide. If we said, we're going to stick with the nine-point-eight million, either the town votes no or the town meeting votes no, then go back to the drawing board with what could you do with that construction money. What we'd do is ask CBT to see what they could do for us, but these would be our choices.
Ms. Toomey?
Yeah, I think it's even beyond those choices, honestly. The problem we have is we have a building that needs a lot of attention, and we have an addition that's actually relatively cheap. So if you looked at the dollar values between those two things, if we lose that grant and we can only fund a portion of this project by nine million or whatever we're allowed to be able to fund it with, you're still not going to be able to repair that existing building. Obviously, we have to go back to the drawing board. We'd have to get CBT in there to tell us what we can do with that nine million, but the initial estimates that we were getting back for just the existing building to put it together were over ten million. So we're still going to have a shortfall no matter what we do. Plus, we'll have a library that doesn't work. You know, it's functioned now as a school, and basically, the way you look at it is it's a school with a library in it. This is going to be a library. That happened to be a school. So you have to look at just the functionality of how a library works nowadays. The books, while they're still important to have, are not as important as some of the technology that's out there. Also, what's not working right now are a lot of the HVAC systems that are in there. They weren't meant for books. So the new HVA system that has to go in there to make it worthwhile for books and humans is expensive. The lifecycle costs, you know, we want to make sure that we're doing the best that we can with all of that information that we now have in our hands. And so it's, honestly, I don't, I mean, people say, I can't tell you that it's not going to be a project because it's not. It's just not going to be what we expect it to be. As a taxpayer who voted for that override overwhelmingly, I would be sorely depressed and sorely disappointed if my money went into a building just to repair it. I want a library, and I want it to function so that the people that are in that library, all of those, you know, all of the employees can do their best, and we haven't given that to them. They've done wonderful work for very little, for giving them little that we've had so far. So it's time that this building gets attended to. So it's hard to say what that Plan B is. I'm sorry, I'm not answering it directly, but I guess what I'm saying is there really is a very difficult question to answer without doing further studies. And that means no grant, back to the drawing board, and I am sure the town will be spending a lot more money on that building as we delay it.
Further discussion? Yes, right in the, Mr. DeDario?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ron DeDario, Precinct Six. I saw some statistics that the library put out that if we did the renovation, just the renovation, the way that it's, would happen now without the addition, it would cost something like fifteen million. That was something that was put out. I'm not sure that's accurate, but that's what it was. So fifteen million to do the renovation, we pay the whole thing without any addition. The cost that we would pay with the addition now would be the nine-point-eight plus three-point-five, which if my addition is right, would be thirteen-three. So in other words, we pay thirteen-three, our money, along with the five-point-one, would give us the addition plus the complete renovation. So it would seem to me to make a whole lot of sense that this three-point-five would be the way to go. The other thing is, as other speakers have said, the library is really the centerpiece of our town. I'm really excited. If you think about, I mean, don't think about your grandmother's library. We're talking about a state-of-the-art multimedia, you know, digitized, ready to go and take us well into the 21st century. I think all of us here feel that, I mean, Reading, I don't know of a better town, city in Massachusetts. I would put us at number one. Our schools, our government, our volunteers. And now we have the opportunity to really create a state-of-the-art library, 21st century, that will take us into the next forty years for our kids and our future people here in this town. Some of you may not use the library. I'm a real heavy user. I see that parking lot crowded. I see people, all sorts of people, from tutoring to people looking for work, people getting out of the house, perhaps they're doing, students, college students, doing papers, they need to, sometimes you need to get out of the house. You can't just work solo. You know, I don't think I have to talk out the library. You know it as well as I do. I really think it's time to get the spade in the ground for three-point-five million more. It's a lot of money. There's no question about that. But I believe it'll be well spent. I don't think we will regret it. So I'm going to ask Bob, I think it's dangerous perhaps going back for another override, a debt exclusion override. People have already, they've ponied up, they've come up with the nine-point-eight million, and I don't really feel comfortable going back. So I'm wondering, is there a way that we could fund this other three-point-five through some of our free cash and maybe bonds that would keep faith with our voters and not force us to go back? And try to explain somewhat of a complicated situation, and with the short time, I'm not sure that we can get that word out. So what would we have to do to move in that direction? And thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
Mr. Lashar?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Part of the six-thirty meeting tonight was to discuss this with the finance committee and many others. The additional three-point-five million, there's a couple of options on how to finance this project. What's always been described to all of you and to the voters, previously it was a ten-year debt issue. As it stands right now, the original ten million costs, if you will, the average single-family household, one-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars a year for ten years. The additional three-point-five million, regardless of where it is, inside or outside the tax levy, would cost another forty-eight dollars a year for ten years. One of the options you can have, if you so choose, is to, instead of doing ten years, do fifteen. Certainly, by all finance theory, that's perfectly acceptable. That would leave you at the one-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars a year, but it would add another five years. If the one-hundred-and-thirty-five is the problem, that solves the problem. However, if you do that, you're paying almost, I think it's about one-point-eight million more in interest over that period of time. I don't like paying interest. It's not productive. I'd rather have shorter debt. Specifically, if you want to talk about using money inside the levy, whether it's free cash or whether it's debt, those are your only two options, each is going to hurt the operating budgets somehow. If we go back to the ten-year construct, it's about four-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars a year to borrow that three-and-a-half million, let's say, inside the tax levy. I just want to look. It's three-hundred-and-ten-thousand if we do it for fifteen years. So it's three to four-hundred-thousand dollars of something we couldn't do that we currently do. We looked at the capital plan and we thought, well, most of that capital should not be changed. If we do, it's going to hurt the operating budgets because it's going to increase maintenance on vehicles or facilities. Don't throw things at me, but the one optional capital is really recreation. If you don't do recreation capital, it doesn't come back as an operating budget expense. The community may not like it, may not get what it wants, but it's most likely not an expense. Future field improvements or putting fields where there are none now is not necessarily going to cause an operating expense. And the other category of large capital that doesn't necessarily cause an expense, what certainly causes a lot of complaints, is we could repair roads slower. If we don't, there's a certain amount of pothole repair, but that's minuscule compared to what it really costs to redo a road. But you have a lot more complaints when you don't fix up a road. Those are- Those are really the two ways. And if those two ways aren't sufficient, then you look at the school budget and you look at the town budget and you have to take away operating funds. Now, what was discussed at 6:30 is the use of free cash. It's no different than what I just described for debt. I shouldn't speak for the Finance Committee, but if you were to use all free cash to fund this, remember that one and a half million that they said was okay to use for the operating budgets? It wouldn't be. The best we'd probably get out of them is half that. If you're going to cut free cash in half, maybe we could use 750. That means the budget we'd have to submit to them next week would have to cut an additional half million out of the school budget and 250,000 out of the town budget for next year and for every year for the next 10 or 15 years. So that's the impact, and that's why, as a debt exclusion, certainly for the Superintendent and I, our first job is to protect the operating budgets. We have a lot of responsibilities and a lot of requests. If you instead, if you agree with that and say, let's don't touch the operating budgets, it's very hard to fit this project in just with debt and capital. A comment was made earlier by John, and he's exactly right, that 10 or 15 years ago, the town did a lot of the debt financing inside the levy. For those of you that can go back that far as town meeting members, you'll also remember that every year at April Town Meeting, we came and asked for another 100 or 200,000 in extra vehicle expenses, vehicle maintenance and repair expenses. Because we had a fleet of equipment, especially fire trucks, was very old and not well-maintained. We had buildings that were in very bad disrepair. We really didn't have a terribly robust, to be polite, capital plan. Uh, and we had operating budgets that had factions within it arguing about each other because the operating budgets weren't very solid either. Honestly, in my opinion, this town spent far too much money inside the tax levy on buildings. Most towns, virtually all of the towns, did not do that in the past. They understand Prop 2 and 1/2 is a very difficult thing to live by. The operating budgets, including capital on a normal basis, are very challenging to do within Prop 2 and 1/2. When you hamstring that by adding significant building projects in there, you're really just asking for trouble.
Mr. Bonizoli, point of order?
Mr. Moderator, um, wasn't it accepted, that the friendly amendment was accepted?
Yes.
To include debt exclusion in the motion? So the, the, it's not debatable of how it's to be funded, free cash, that the motion on the, before this body is debt exclusion only?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Maun?
Thank you, Jamie Maun, Precinct Four. Um, let me begin by saying I'm very much in favor of this, and I think it's important we go ahead. To have a library that's not falling down and meets code and is safe, we're going to have to spend this money anyway over time. We can spend the money now, get a better library and get the addition. So that's why I'm in favor of it. But I, I do have a question. If the original motion passed without the friendly amendment, and then we went for a debt exclusion and the town did not pass it, would we be able to fund that 3.5 through free cash or some other method?
Mr. Lulacher.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. If the original motion passed, you would not legally be able to go to the voters and ask them the question because the original motion does not request a debt exclusion.
So if the current motion with the friendly amendment passes tonight through Town Meeting and then is defeated in a town vote, do we have any option to fund that 3.5 million dollars?
If that sequence of events happens, then it's up to the library trustees, the library building committee, the Finance Committee and the selectmen to sit down and decide what to do, quite honestly.
So passing that amendment by Town Meeting wouldn't influence that? If we didn't meet or didn't vote on that, we'd be in that same situation, correct?
Passing the motion as amended asks the voters the question. If you don't accept the amendment, it doesn't ask the voters the question. If the voters say no, that's a fair question that all these folks up front have to answer is what is a no mean?
So, so there's not a definitive answer? It would have to be worked out at the time?
There's really only two options that I can see. We tell the voters a no means the project is gone completely, or we tell the voters, if you say no, we'll have to reconvene. And the method of doing that most quickly is to call a special Town Meeting inside the annual Town Meeting to have that discussion.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes, right here in the front?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Heck, Precinct Eight, and just resigned as President of the Library Foundation. I think we have to step up and do this, but I'd like to echo something that was mentioned before. I happened to work very hard for about eight weeks last year to get this debt exclusion initially passed. And I must say that there was a very hard-working committee of a number of people, but as I look around this room, a number of you were not involved in that one damn bit. And what I have to say is if we, as a Town Meeting, vote to go to the voters, we, as a Town Meeting, ought to stand up and get this to happen. Last time, there were an awful lot of people who worked very hard to get the debt exclusion passed. Either we believe in this library as a Town Meeting. If we do, then I urge every one of you, not just to vote tonight, but to vote with your feet in the next six to eight weeks and make sure this is passed.
Further discussion? Uh, yes, in the far corner, your hand up, yes.
John Brezlin, Precinct Three. This is my first time at the MyCare. I've been a resident of Reading for a little over six years now. This is my fourth year as Town Meeting Member. So I apologize for the delay in getting up. I purposely tried to wait until Bill Brown had a chance to speak because I typically tend to side with him on matters of town spending, but that didn't happen. As I've been following the library project over the past few years, I've seen the total go from 10 million to 12 million in 2012, to the town vote of 14.9 million in 2013, and now to a proposed 18.4 million in 2014. The state reimbursement of 5.1 has remained the same, and as it stands today, Reading taxpayers will have to pay 13.3 million dollars to renovate the library. Based on the proposed plans, I do not see a great return on this invest, investment. I think I might somewhat be in the minority. But, um, the plan repairs the existing building, addresses code and ADA requirements, and then adds a new space with meeting space and a conference room. This is not a 21st century library. In fact, in this digital age of information, we may not need a bigger library. A digital version of the entire existing library collection can fit on a single computer. As it stands today, I can go for my cellphone from anywhere and connect up with the library network and get a book delivered to my e-reader, all without leaving where I am. And even more so, when I consume information, I'm using the internet, and that's a resource that's available to almost every household in Reading. So I don't see our property values increasing if we had this library as planned. If anything, the property tax increase would be a minded deterrent for prospective home buyers. The rising costs are a great opportunity for us to think differently about the town library. I cannot vote to approve to bring the total of debt to 13.3 million dollars to pay for a plan that doesn't look like a 21st century library. A library is essentially a loss leader for a town. It is not going to generate much revenue. If we're going to invest money in a new library, it needs to be an innovative place people will want to visit physically or virtually to consume information on new media formats. Just because we have an expiring discount to save 5.1 million dollars off an 18.4 million dollar project, it isn't reason to go ahead and rush ahead with this. Today, I ask that we vote no and go back to the drawing board. In the future, I'd like to see the town scale back the library, not scale back the information it contains, but scale back the space that contains it. Maybe we could consider a quasi-virtual town library with a digital center in the town square, a location that would still be staffed with great employees, the curators of information, just in a newer digital format. In the near future, I'd like to see the money we don't spend today be considered for a town early childhood education center, from birth to kindergarten, a building that can include read-alongs and enriching activities for children from birth to kindergarten, something that would be lost in a smaller digital library we may someday have. I appreciate all the hard work that has gone into the library project, all the time it took to get to this point, and I sincerely apologize that I cannot vote to support it. Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes, in the back.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Karen Janowski, uh, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. I do have a couple of questions. Um, one of the things I'm noticing in the plans is that it doesn't include any parking improvements. So I'm wondering if at some point we, we will be asked to fund parking improvements.
Do we have an answer?
The, uh, the current plans, um, provide for seven or eight additional parking spaces from what we have, um, and I, and the, the project includes a full, full, uh, update of the landscape and the parking services now. Is that correct? So I, I don't, I don't anticipate, um, there's nowhere else to have additional parking, you know, on the site. So, um, I think the current project is costed, includes all the parking we're going to ever get there, um, but it's, it's already included in the current plan of seven or eight additional spaces. Uh, we're still looking at those details, um, depending on what we do on the, on the far side of the, of the addition, um, but that's the current plan. But, but it's all costed in, so whatever we, whatever parking we have will be embedded. Is that fair? Yeah?
So there's no additional, um, expense anticipated?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you. Um, the other thing, too, is the amount that's being requested ends up being about 100% above the original request from the, for the state. And I'm wondering if we could be creative and go back to what the voters approved, the 14.9 million dollars? It seems to me we have two choices. Be, be creative and use the funds that the voters approved last year, or else another option I'm wondering about, which would be to start all over from the beginning, request, um, resubmit a grant request to the state with this updated, accurate information that we currently have. When we made the original request, we didn't really have accurate information, and now we do have accurate information. And I'm wondering if we resubmitted the plan, would we get additional funding that would be more representative of, of a larger percentage of the, the, um, building project itself?
Mr. Hutchinson?
So, conceptually, of course, we could scrap the current project, re, repackage with the now very solid cost estimates and resubmit. Obviously, we'd forfeit what we have. You don't get to keep that. We'd terminate that project and then take another shot. So obviously, there's no way to know if the state would award us, uh, the project. Secondly, the, you know, the, there's maybe 20 or 30 libraries that already have awards that are unfunded at the bottom of the cascade. So there's no way for us to know if, even if we were awarded, uh, on this big, on a bigger project, uh, whether we'd be at the top of the list, and I doubt it. I doubt we're going to, you know, elbow in, in front of Garrett or Acton to, to get the eighth spot. I suspect we'll be at the 40th spot. Um, so what that means, I think, is, I have no idea. It seems like somewhat of a, a, a long shot, but maybe it's 50/50. But it's certainly a delay of two years, I'd say. I mean, now, off the top of my head, because you'd have to repackage the application. And as, if I'm not mistaken, the, there's no more grant program. So they, they wouldn't, maybe that was the short answer to the question. Sorry. You, you can't submit additional applications. It's over. That, there was done. There was a one-and-done, and the 40 libraries are queued up. Sorry for that over analytical answer that actually was wrong. But, thank you for the question.
Further discussion? Is, oh, in the front row, I'm sorry. Is it Binda?
Angela Binda, Precinct Five. Um, I, I have two questions. The first one is a design question. It was, um, I received a phone call from someone in my precinct asking about, um, the history room. I wasn't aware of this. I hadn't looked at it that carefully. But I'm wondering, um, there doesn't appear to be a history collection room in the new design, and the person who's, who called me was very concerned about this and was wondering what was happening to the history collection.
Do we have an answer? Okay.
The first part of that question was that the materials and resources that are currently, uh, near the old port corse share is actually, will be retained, of course, uh, but they would be distributed in, in, in one of the new meeting rooms. Uh, those materials that are needing to be secured would be secured in cabinetry so that you could actually see them and access them as you currently do, and those that are freely, uh, accessed would be a part of that and would be in one of the conference rooms.
So the, so all the materials will stay together as a collection?
All of the materials will stay as a collection, yes.
They won't be dispersed, like in reference in other areas? Okay. I have, um, a, another question about the costs. I think that, um, all of the, um, the explanations for the reason why this is, the project costs have gone up, um, have been very thoroughly explained. But if we're going to the town and we're going to be expected to talk to people about this and, and be proactive about this, um, I guess I would like to know what happens when somebody says to me, well, how do we know this is the last time you're coming to us for money? So I see, um, on page 16, that there is an overhead contingency of close to $3 million and a project contingency of 1.5 million. Is that right? So it's about 4.5 contingency. And I know that as time goes on, I mean, it, let's say it does get approved and we start right away. Can we see the cost? Will we see the cost go up? Are we pretty confident that this will be the last time? Are, are, are there, are cost overruns? Is that what those contingencies are? Cost overruns? Is it possible that, I mean, we've all seen projects go up, and I'm wondering what the average percentage is? What do we say to people who say, um, you know, well, I'm pretty, I'm pretty confident in the explanations that I was given and what the, what the reasons are for coming back? But what, what do we say to people who are asking us if we're saying, you really should support this and you should support the 3.5 million increase? What do we say if somebody says, well, it's just going to keep going up?
Do we have an answer?
I'll, I'll try to address that on, on behalf of the, uh, the Library Building Committee. The, uh, the $3 million that I think you're referring to is, is part of the construction costs. It's the contractor's cost for doing the project and doing the business. It includes the general conditions, which is operating costs, project managers, the procedures that there'll be required to engage as part of the specifications. It includes the general requirements, like putting up a safety fence, protecting the site, protecting the general public, providing samples, providing shop runs. All of these are part of the process of doing the job. Uh, within that, there, there is an item that is sort of mislabeled as contingency. It's an estimated contingency. It's a device that the cost estimator, uh, uses to, uh, assign money to things at this phase of the design project that he knows dwell, dwells within the project. It's items that are not detailed yet because we have not reached that stage in the design process, but he's aware that these items dwell in there, and through his experience, he assigns a number to that. That money doesn't, i- it's really part of the construction cost. It's not contingency in that it goes away or that you hope you won't have to use it. It will get reassigned along the way for those items that we know will emerge. Having said that, the cost estimator, uh, i- is dependent on the scope of work that we define, and we feel pretty confident that we've done a good job defining the scope of work. In terms of overall project contingency, there is a number in there, evident roughly 10% of the project contingency? Nine and a half, 10%? That, that's a true contingency. E- e- every project is going to still, no matter how good a job you do, is going to have unknowns and unforeseen's. At this stage of the project, I think a 10% contingency is reasonable. It's to cover, uh, potential cost creep, but part of our job is that if cost creep, but part of our job is that if we see that cost creep, we look at ways to pull it back. Fortunate in that if this all goes forward and this is able to be bid this summer, we have a pretty good handle on what the inflation will be. We're not looking out two or three years where it could be unpredictable. Cost estimator has benchmarked that and probably feels pretty confident that he understands what the outlook is for inflation over what is a relatively short time relative to a project. And the balance of that contingency is truly for unforeseen's that will come along the way. There will be things that will happen during construction. Change orders are inevitable. Things will be discovered that are unforeseen, but I think the plan is that this 10%, which is a significant amount of money, will address that.
And that 10% is in this budget right now?
It's in the total project cost.
It's in the total project costs. Okay, and that's, you know, according to past history in the town, that's a reasonable number to look at and think that...
I can't speak for the history of the town, I'm sorry.
Mr. Berman, did you have a comment on that?
Is that a reasonable?
Actually, I wasn't going to address whether that's reasonable or not, but Angela, to answer your question about, you know, if you would go to someone and say, "Well, how do we know it's the last?" We don't know what's going to happen. Anyone who's done a home construction project of their own in addition, anything, knows that there's always going to be something at the end. So what I'd like to share is that part of the discussion that we had earlier today about how we fund this, we did discuss the use of free cash as a potential way to fund this project. And while we don't think that it was a great use of way to fund it in the beginning, no one on the finance committee was against using free cash. If at the end of the day, we're $100,000, we're $200,000, and we need to get from the one-yard line to the goal line, we still have that option. It's just that we didn't want to use it now, which is why we proposed to fund it the way we did.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Right here in the middle? Ms. Anselon?
Fran Anselon, precinct seven. I have a comment and a question. Comment first. I am also the assistant treasurer of the Friends of the Reading Public Library. It means that, oh, yeah. I write the checks to reimburse staff members who pony up money for various expenses for programs, and I write the honorary checks for the people who come to the library and make presentations. And I want to just counter the notion that, yes, although we're moving toward a digital world, I am blown away by the number of programs that our library offers, that whether it's authors of books coming and speaking about their books, whether it's the live wires, which is an adult presentation for adults of varying topics, whether it's museum passes, whether it's the toddler sing-alongs, I'm writing all those checks. And I'm, we have fabulous programs. Okay, that's my comment. Now my question, and this, I hate asking this, because I hate getting up in front of 191 of my peers and admitting my ignorance, but I am so confused about prop two-and-a-half overrides, debt exclusions, voter okays on expenditures. I need a little lexicon of how the debt exclude, what are we excluded from? What's the, I get so balled up with this. Is it a prop two-and-a-half override? Bob, help me, help me!
Mr. LaShaw.
Wherever Bill Brown is right now, he's wishing he could rush down here. There's a prop two-and-a-half levy limit. I think everyone understands what that is. Two-and-a-half percent on top of last year, plus new growth, which in Reading is normally about 3% a year we get to increase property taxes. There are several, there's a few vehicles that you can do outside of that mechanism. That's the money that the state allows you to do by prop two-and-a-half. You can do a capital exclusion. If we wanted to buy a fire truck for $1 million, a ladder truck, we could say, "We need $1 million. We want to spend it next Tuesday. We want to buy a fire truck. We're going to assess the full $1 million for one year on the tax rate. Over and done with. Capital exclusion. Debt exclusion. We want to buy that fire truck. We think $1 million is too much in one year. It's going to cost us $1,100 over two years, so we're going to do $550,000 in the first year and in the second year, and we're going to call that debt exclusion. It's the same idea, but it's spread out over a longer amount of time. Each of those are very finite. Capital means one year. It means immediately. Debt means however many years you borrow for. An override is permanent. The last override this town did was, I don't know, 12, 15 years ago, something like that, in which case a certain amount of money was asked of the town as an operating override, was approved eventually by the town, and that could be levied right away up to the maximum or could progress over some period of time, but the authorization has been given to permanently add, let's say, $5 million onto the property tax base.
But the debt exclusion over...
Anything outside of prop two-and-a-half, capital exclusion, debt exclusion, override requires the voters to say yes, because otherwise, by default, the voters have said only two-and-a-half percent.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes, further discussion?
Tom O'Rourke, precinct two. I guess from everything I've heard tonight, the following is clear to me, the town and the town meeting members before that have voted in favor. This project needs additional funding, and by the way, I don't think in the future there'll be any more viable financial way to rehab or rebuild the library. And from what we've heard tonight, I think unfortunately, unfortunately, debt exclusion is the only best way to do that, and it gets back to what was said by a few others tonight. It's going to be hard to do that, so we all got to get out and get behind it, so, thank you.
Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Russ Graham, precinct four. And by way of full disclosure, a member of the Reading Library Foundation. I have perhaps not unsurprisingly, I've got a number of calls in the last few days about the process of building projects in Reading with which I have some experience. It is a somewhat unfair question. The whole problem of this issue is very simple: too little time, too little money. And the pressure of both of those made for a very confusing journey to where we are this evening. It is somewhat unfair in that when the school building committee went to ask a large sums of money, eventually totaling $100 million, we immediately and first came and said, "We need a feasibility study. We cannot make to you a reasonable advice without knowing what the problems are." That was missing in this project by virtue of too little money, too little time. Once that was done, we were able to come to town meeting, make a full presentation, some of which we had to make additions to, but overall, which came in pretty solid. As to whether it can be done by in-house or outhouse, let me tell you, if I could have back the time that I spent with Beth Flypis and Peter Heckenblatt looking at that project, I'd lived 20 more years. I spent more time with Beth Flypis than I did with my wife. And Bob is absolutely correct. We knew, and town meeting to an extent knew, this was not the most prudent way to do things without a prop two-and-a-half exclusion. We also knew, leaving that nice financial philosophical question to one side. The parents of the town of Reading were not going to allow those buildings to stay as they were. They were not going to accept the enrollment that would come with that, and they were not going to have their children in those kinds of buildings. And if they had to, prop two-and-a-half exclusion or not, they would stack these chairs, and that would pass without input, without coordination, without many meetings between selectmen, finance committee, school committee, and I think I went through four superintendents. So it is just too little time, too little money. And because they did not have that money, they did not know the full extent of what they needed. They now do, and it will be difficult to go back to the people. But again, if I can go back to the school buildings, you may remember, we went to them to ask for a new school and to add on to the burrows. And they said, "No new school and no burrows." And the school building assistance bureau of the state said, "Oh, really? No money from us." So we looked at that and immediately realized we would spend more money to redo the burrows than we would spend to redo the burrows and build a new school for not to have that state reimbursement. When we explained that to the voters, we eventually, of course, got that override. So there is going to have to be a lot of explanation. Mr. Lippert is correct. It would be awfully nice not to have to do that. But in the end, I think if all of us work together, we can do it. I think it ought to be done, and I think the people in this case and so many others will tell us what kind of town do we want to be and is the library not a part of that. I would just pass this motion. Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes.
Brian Snell, precinct three. Just a little bit of clarification, if I could, from Bob. You had said earlier that last year, we approved a debt exclusion for 14.9 million, which would allow us to essentially go out and borrow 14.9 million without getting any additional approvals. And I guess within that 14.9 million would be 13.2 million that we're imagining that this whole project would cost, meaning that the difference of 1.7 million is essentially what the state could have been giving back to us. Is it, I understand it's disingenuous that we got that approval based on a $14.9 million expense and a $5.1 million reimbursement, but technically or legally, couldn't we just continue to go along with this $14.9 million approval and only look at it as a $1.7 million reimbursement?
Mr. LaShaw.
I'm not sure I understood all your math, but let me step you through it, and then I might ask you a question. I think what we have in front of us, if I add it upright, is an 18.3 or $4 million project. 5.1 of that is the state, the rest of that's us, 13.3. We don't have the authorization from town meeting to borrow or from the voters to borrow more than 14.9 million, so we cannot continue with a project that we know costs more than 14.9 million. That's the short answer. I wasn't quite clear about the 1.7. You know, the part about if the town share is really 13.3 now, which is about what it is, could we tell the voters, "Well, guess what? You already approved 14.9 last time, so that's what we're going to do"? In theory, some of that works, whether it's genuine or disingenuine, but the problem is town meeting needs to authorize debt at the $18 million level, and so do the voters, if that's what the total project costs. Because again, the state money is going to come in over five years. All right, maybe not 18 million, but 16 and a half or 17 million, but it's more than the 14.9 that they authorized. We couldn't technically do the project, even if we wanted to sort of do that end run.
Further discussion? None appearing? Are we ready for the vote? This requires a two-thirds vote, so I'm going to appoint some counters. Mr. Rushworth, would you take the, what I'm calling the far section? Mr. Sylvester, would you take the nearest section? And Mr. Crook, would you take the town meeting members that are sitting at the front tables, and don't forget to count yourself? All those in favor of the main motion, please rise. 15, thank you.
38.
38. Mr. Rushworth?
56.
56. And those opposed, please rise.
Zero.
Zero. Mr. Rushworth?
Two.
Two. Mr. Sylvester?
11.
11. The vote being 109 in the affirmative and 13 in the negative, the motion carries. Mr. Bonazzoli? The motion to adjourn Sadiqai, is there a second? Second? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed, and the motion carries. I'm thinking it stands adjourned.